All right, well, I got 11 o'clock, so let's get this show on the road. We call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I got my flag going, so everybody stand up. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Right.
From the United States of America.
And to the Republic of Wisconsin. One nation, one liberty. Okay. And I've got no opening remarks. New business. First agenda, Building Commission slash Town Council Matters. This regarding Stop 29 and the project on the Wortman property. So I'm going to defer to you. Do you want to go ahead and tell us?
Just a brief update. At the Building Commission level, there were some discussion about some shoreline protection measures that involve the town at Stop 29. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. Ultimately, there are some discussions about access and details that aren't ready for today for consideration, but I expect them soon. So I would recommend that, if possible, the council table or put off this topic because there really isn't anything to discuss until some details are finalized. Then I will otherwise advise the council as those come in.
As the person who was instrumental in trying to push for a tighter timeframe, I appreciate the fact that we need to do a little more homework. And I'd make a motion that we table it for this morning.
Second that.
What are we tabling?
The discussion about Stop 29 and the project on the Wortman property, which is the property immediately to the west.
And Mary Lou, yeah, just to be clear, part of the discussion would have been today about access and any shoreline protection measures on the town's property at the Beach Stop.
Okay.
We're just not ready for those details yet.
How does that impact Wortman's concern about the emergency?
They do not have an emergency.
Yeah, and they have their permits as necessary and can start their work. It's just there isn't details about with regard to the town's access. We're not ready to do that yet.
Okay.
Who seconded that?
I seconded it.
John, along those lines, we're not suggesting a long-term delay, just possibly a week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, and in fact, we have a meeting coming up on the 26th. Maybe we'd be ready to discuss it then. Um, so, yeah. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next agenda is the 2021 salaries. And again, we have a meeting scheduled for the 26th on that. Uh, I know we don't have everybody from the HR committee, and I would like to have everybody from the HR committee here. Uh, plus, I was anticipating that we would have three different proposals, not just the one proposal from the HR committee. Uh, I think the town council should look at all three proposals. I don't think we want to just rubber stamp with the HR committee. I think we all want to be thoughtful about this. Um, so again, I'd make a motion that we move this to that 26th meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, okay, residents pass charges, refuse slash leave. Mary Lou, I think you've got this, right?
Yes, I do. And we won't identify the person, but we found out, uh, actually, Bill and I found out that they weren't paying. Uh, they're more than willing to pay. So we're going to treat it like the assessor does, if they've forgotten you. Assessors don't forget you, but we only went back three years. So we have the garbage and refuse, and I did a little spreadsheet on it. So if the council approves it, we will move on and write the letter.
And so the idea being that we would charge for the previous three years and not go back any further than that, correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion about that? I'll make a motion. We approve the recommendation of the water department?
I'll second it. Coker.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, July 4th plans. Uh, so July the 4th, um, is about four months away, a little less. Uh, and of course, the big variable there is what's going to be, what's the situation with COVID going to be. It makes it pretty difficult for the town to decide what to do. Uh, there's been some discussion about what to do in terms of uh, Fourth of July parade. And I think, I think the general consensus from the town council and from the Civic Association is parade's probably not a good idea. Just too much crowding, everybody around along the side of the road. Um, then discussion came up about what to do in terms of beer, you know, selling beer at the community center and selling, well, usually it's brats. But some thought was given to whether or not to bring in vendors, you know, with food trucks, maybe beer trucks from breweries. Uh, again, we've got COVID hanging over everything. Um, the Park Board was interested in perhaps taking that on if the Civic Association didn't want to. However, I think Civic's concern is that, you know, that's a money-making project for them. And they also are very concerned about COVID, to their, to their credit. And, you know, they don't want to put people at risk, any more than the town council does. And obviously, the town council's going to have to sign off on anything that either the park department would do or Civic Association would do. Um, and I just don't think we're in a position to make any kind of a commitment like that because we just don't know where we're going to be at with COVIDs, particularly with the spread of the variants and with what's going on in Michigan right now, which is, of course, right next door to us. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that everybody, both in the town and on, and on the Civic Association, understands that the goal of this was not for the Park Department to take this over from Civic. We understand that, that that's what they do to make money, to basically to pay for the fireworks and to make contributions to the town for certain things that we need. They paid for the playgrounds in the past. Uh, I know they paid for a playground in Dunland. They paid for our playground at the community center. Uh, and they've done a number of other projects too. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that this is what's going on. And this is not, is not a battle between Park Department and the Civic Association. We want to work together on this. Um, and so, I, you know, I guess I'd open it up for a discussion if people want to comment. But I just want to make sure we clear the air. I, we don't want to get sideways on this issue.
Bob, it's Anita Remigius. I'm here.
Lost you, Anita. You froze. Everybody else is moving. All right, anybody else want to make a comment while I need to? Oh, there we go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're back.
Okay, um, thank you for that introduction. I'm here on behalf of Park Board. Joy is also on. Kendra and Zach are not able to join. Um, thank you again for reiterating the, um, the issue of collaboration. The only thing I want to say about food trucks is that it really is closer to two and a half months away. And if Park Board is going to do it, and again,
Frozen up.
Keep freezing. Lost you again, Anita. Whatever you did last time to unfreeze yourself, do it again.
Take it over, then we will.
We lost you. We didn't, we didn't hear the last 20 seconds because you froze up again.
I'm sorry. It's not showing I'm freezing. Um, again, so we'll go back to if, um, and again, taking into account COVID. And if Park Board is going to do the food and manage the food, the discussion has been that the, that Civic will take over the beverage truck.
You froze again.
Damn internet connection, I think.
Anita, if you can hear me, try, just try shutting off your video. Sometimes that'll improve the bandwidth for your.
Contracts, we would also.
Anita, we lost you for the last 20 seconds. Go ahead and repeat.
Try turning off your video. Sometimes that helps, and then we'll just hear you.
Uh, okay. Okay, let's go back. I'm not sure where you last heard me. But the discussion with, with Megan Applegate from Civic has been that Civic would like to retain the beverage trucks, the beer trucks, uh, and that the possibility is that Park Board would take over the food trucks. The responsibility for payment, contracts, we would also help with any additional fencing that's needed for COVID. Um, the issue is that it's really two and a half months away. And, um, the position of Park Board is that we would be collaborative with Megan, who has a couple of ideas for local vendors and a client of hers, but that we need to know today because the fourth is only two and a half months away. And if Civic is not willing to make that decision, and again, taking into account, uh, council, that we are aware of COVID, we would work those into contracts. But again, either Park Board is going to manage the food part or Civic is going to manage the food part. So Park Board would need to know today. So, thank you.
And I guess my thought would be that if, if Park Board is telling us that they need a decision from the town council today, I, as one member of the town council, would say no. Uh, I don't think that the town council has any more sacred responsibility than to protect the public health of our residents.
I agree. I agree, Bob. And that's why I said we would work into it, any contract cancellations, anything like that due to COVID. We're simply looking for a yes or a no from Civic that either they will take on the food or they will not take on the food. Because what we don't want to have happen is Civic doesn't have a meeting until May 14th for them to wait until then and then say, all right, we'll give it to Park Board. Park Board is ready to move forward. And again, with the appropriate COVID, um, COVID, you know, in, in knowing that COVID could, could put all of this off. Um, and we're willing to take that on with just the food. We're willing to leave the beverage with Civic because that is a moneymaker for them. And all we're saying is, if Civic is saying they do not want to do the food, great, Park Board will take it on with the appropriate cancellations in place. And if Civic is not ready to make a decision, then Park Board is not going to move forward.
Okay, I see we have John Mangle, and he's, he's actually the president of Civic. I asked him to attend this meeting, and I think he's probably the appropriate spokesman for Civic.
Yeah, so, um, uh, if we unfold this a little bit, Civic's function in life is to provide fireworks on the Fourth of July. And in the process of various fundraisers and collections and so forth, we collect enough to do that and a little bit more to help where we can throughout the town. Uh, we get that money from, uh, the Fourth of July sales, uh, from t-shirts sales and direct solicitation. Uh, so we have, uh, no reluctance to do the food yet again, um, other than COVID. So I'm not sure where anybody thought that we were choosing not to serve food anymore. That's not the case. Our, uh, our position is that if it's socially appropriate for food to be served, then we will serve the food. If it's not, then guess what? We won't. Um, so that's, that's it in a nutshell. If the Park Department wants to, uh, do this, then that's going to, um, reduce the revenue that Civic generates. It's going to reduce, um, probably projects within the town first and ultimately the fireworks. Wouldn't be this year, probably wouldn't be next year. But it would be a few years out. We would not have the funds to, uh, do fireworks. So, uh, at the end of it all, I'm not sure, uh, you know, where we go from here. But if COVID is a concern come the Fourth, and it's such a concern that, uh, food is, it's not appropriate for Civic to serve food, it's probably not appropriate for anyone to serve food. So that's about all I got to say on it.
Can I make a comment, Bob? I think, uh, John, just to reassure you, I think the thought was, and the fire department's going through similar gymnastics relative to the ice cream social, you know, which we've done for a number of years. In our last meeting, we discussed whether we should do single-serving wrapped items rather than doing the personnel-intensive scooping. And then we won't have tables with all the extra goodies and all that just to try to make a compromise between not having it at all and doing something that was a little more safe in terms of the COVID. And I think that was what people were discussing at the Park Board level. I don't want to put words in their mouths, but again, there was never any.
Well, yeah, so, uh, at this, uh.
Can we let John finish, please?
Just let me finish. So my point.
Yeah, so we haven't decided.
Can we let John Wall finish his thought, please?
So, so what I'm trying to. No, I'm not, not quite finished yet, John. So my point, my point is, I think the discussion revolved around, is there something that's safer than your normal operation, which involves all of you in very close proximity to each other and, and lines funneled through a single gateway, so to speak, for either, you know, refreshments, liquid refreshments or food? And I think the town council, to Bob's credit, you know, being a medical person, was concerned about that. As again, we, the fire departments are concerned about the same thing. Cramming a lot of people into, into an enclosed space is probably not a good idea, even in July. So I think the discussion revolved around, is there some sort of hybrid meaning fire, uh, food trucks in lieu of you guys doing what you do typically in terms of a safety factor? So that was the discussion. And, and in terms of who actually is responsible to do it, I don't think anybody would want to usurp anything that the Civic's done. They're a wonderful organization, and they've, we've all benefited from it, including the fire department. So I don't think there was ever any intent to, to, to take it from anybody. The thought was, if you guys had decided because of COVID that the situation that you typically are in with all that close proximity of not only the, the public, but also yourselves, that maybe there would be an alternative to that, because it's the 100th year anniversary, that maybe we could get, somebody could get some food trucks, set them up around the perimeter of some area, and that we would have a safer situation. So that was really what prompted all the discussion. So at this point, I think all of us need to decide whether, is it, and again, this, I'll defer to Bob, the medical person, is it possible to hold even the fire department's ice cream social with, you know, some sort of safety, rearranging the whole configuration? So that's, I think, the first decision. After that, if Civic decided that they wanted to do food trucks, for instance, in lieu of the, the, you know, cram job on having everybody all together like that, then I don't think anybody at the Park Board would, would mind that. So, so that's where I think we have to make the decision. Do we want to encourage somebody to get some food trucks lined up? Because time is of the essence with contracts. So that's where it sits.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so I guess, um, you know, parallel.
Now you're breaking up.
In fact, uh, we are pursuing various options. And there's good news, bad news. Uh, as Anita said, you know, you need a little bit more lead time on food trucks. Uh, so that's the benefit of brats. The close proximity, though, is a downside of brats. So we have a, uh, a couple, uh, we have a couple efforts, uh, kind of running out there right now. I've talked with Nelson's, uh, and I know Megan's talked with a couple other people, so.
Can I just say that Park Board is more than willing to share its information about the food trucks? We have gathered information. The town council allowed us to do that. No contracts, no decisions, simply gathering. And again, if Park Board is not tasked with doing the food trucks, we are more than happy to give our information to Civic. All we're looking for is just to reiterate what John Wall said. We were looking for a way to do this that would be more safe, that would tie into the 100-year anniversary of Long Beach and to have something that, again, we can back out of if it's necessary. So if Park Board is not tasked with food trucks, we are more than happy to give our information to Civic so that something does get done, based on COVID guidelines.
John, go ahead.
Well, I guess, um, feel free to forward that to Megan, and I'll catch up with her.
Well, we need a decision first. So we'll forward it, whether if we're doing it, then we, we will.
Anita, we need to, we need to have some order with this meeting, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
One person talking at a time.
I thought he was done. Sorry.
Yeah, no, so I, I think, why don't you two work together? Uh, we have a special meeting of the town council on the 26th. Why don't we see what can happen with the Park Board working together with, with the Civic Association? And we'll have this meeting on the 26th, which is just next week. Uh, and maybe we'll be closer to making some decision. Again, COVID's going to have to be the overriding, overriding factor here. You know, one concern is, and we haven't really talked about the beer truck, is, you know, this, this disease is mutating into a more infectious, a disease that's affecting younger people. Um, a beer truck in that kind of circumstance certainly sounds like a recipe for disaster. So right now, the way things are moving, that doesn't sound real optimistic. Um, but why don't Civic work with, um, the park departments, share information? And, and let's maybe bring this back on the 26th. Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, just a tacky financial question. Is it normal process for vendor trucks to share part of their receipts with the, with the group that, uh, maybe, maybe I should have known this, but I, but if you park, if you park in our property and serve food or beer, is it normal for them to provide us a percentage?
No, yeah, I don't think that's the usual way things work. And the vendor may have problems with that because obviously, if he's got to increase the price of his product, he's going to sell less product. It's supply and demand. So, you know, that may not be an option. Uh, my idea was that we weren't, the town is certainly has no interest in making money on the deals. The town, I think, simply is interested in, you know, not seeing the Fourth of July tradition.
I meant, I meant, yeah, I meant for Civic, you know, for that.
Yeah, and I don't know how that would work.
I can tell you, some organizations do get the benefit of some percentage of the take. I know we've been to many music festivals and, um, the Notre Dame fundraiser that occurred about a month ago also had that arrangement. In fact, I believe they had some vendors that donated product in the beverage arena. Um, so I think that, that's possible, Bill, to have some sort of an agreement.
Yeah, that's, uh, that is the business model of Nelson's, by the way.
Oh, is it? Good.
Yeah, that's, uh, it's a, it's a business founded on, um, fundraising.
Is Nelson's a?
Porta Pit. Porta Pit Chicken.
Oh, that's the Porta Pit Chicken. Okay. That's good stuff. Okay.
One thing I will say, I'm sorry, John. One thing I will say is that when the fire department started to consider whether or not we wanted to pursue the ice cream social this year, one of the issues more than likely will be, much to the experience that Notre Dame had with their fundraiser, was you, depending on the status of the county at the time, you had, and certainly you'd have to do this with your planning operation. We may have to present whatever we plan to do to the, to the county health department with some sort of an idea of the traffic flows and how we're going to control, uh, social distancing. So it may be that whatever we do will need to be presented to them for approval. And if the status in the county changes on their color designation or, you know, incidence rates, that, that could change all the time the event happens.
Good advice.
And we may have to talk to the state legislature too. They want to, they want to be able to overrule the health department. So I guess we just keep that in mind. Anita, you have your hand up?
I do. I was waiting.
Go ahead.
Number one, there is a model. Um, I know that the issue, it's, uh, I know that Civic wanted to retain the beverage truck because beer does offer, um, better profits. So that was why, um, Park Board talked about the food trucks. And there are a couple of food trucks, if we're given the option, that can do a fundraising. But that was not really the, um, one year, um, thought behind Park Board doing it this year was to make money. It was simply to provide something. And number two, I'm, I'm sure it's, I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but I would like Joy to weigh in on if, um, we can, if Park Board just wants to say no or if she wants to wait, um, I think you said until April 26th, which I know is only a few days away. But there is a time constraint, um, besides COVID.
Joy, are you out there?
I'm here. My, my opinion would be that Park Board would back out. It sounds like Civic, if it's, if they're going to be allowed to do something, want to do it. To me, uh, that would be my opinion. And, you know, with, the Park Board doesn't want to step on Civic's toes. This was all just because we thought, uh, it wasn't going to be done. I think it was a lot of miscommunication, actually. So, yeah, we don't want to step on Civic's toes or, or anything.
Well, who, who is this?
Okay, so, so, John, is that a fair representation? You, if you guys can do it, you'd like to? And if, if you guys can share information with the Park Board and get, get their information on food and beer trucks, is that?
Yeah, I, so, I mean, that's fine. I think, uh, I think Joy summed it up quite eloquently.
Good, okay. All right, so I think we've got a meeting of the minds. Um, and so I guess if you guys are going to share information and you have a meeting of the minds already, we really don't need to put it on the agenda for the 26th meeting. Uh, and John, why don't you just keep in communication with, with me on, on what's going on? Does that sound okay?
I can do that.
Okay. All right, I think we put that one to bed. Uh, okay, so Chief Swistic, are you on there?
Good morning, yes, Dr. Lomay.
Oh, good, yep. So you're interested in a, uh, fifteen hundred dollar to two thousand dollar request for, well, you, you go ahead and explain it.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, one of my goals for this year is I wanted to do some community engagement, um, just really reaching out to the community, especially the youth, with some community outreach. And there's some promotional items that I would like to purchase. Um, some of those items, just to sum up, would be sunglasses for children, frisbees, um, footballs, things for the beach, and then also some, um, small, like badges, stickers that say Junior Police on them. As we all know across the nation right now, there's, you know, ongoing controversy with, you know, law enforcement and communities as a whole. And the Long Beach community being such a great community, I want to make sure that the deputies here are engaging in a positive manner with our community. And one of the ways to do that would have items that we can, you know, pass out throughout the summer season with the residents and the children here in the community. So I've got some ideas of some items that I can purchase from a local vendor. That is Scotty's Dynamic Designs. Um, I would hope to spend no more than, I believe it was, uh, two thousand dollars that the Park Department Board, so Park Department Board, so generously offered to assist us with those items. And, um, I can answer any questions that anybody has.
Yeah, I, I know the Park Department offered, I guess I'm wondering about how appropriate it is for that money to come from the Park Department as opposed to from the town's, what, Bill, general fund? Can you comment on how that would, how that should work?
Uh, we, we just deposited slightly over two thousand dollars for the sale of the, of the damaged, uh, lease car. Uh, I mean, the one that was lost, lost its transmission. And, uh, and actually, that bid was thirteen hundred dollars more than the lower bid that we got. So we, we certainly have the funds to accommodate that. And I did put that into the general fund.
And so, I guess I'm wondering about, yeah, I figured we probably had the money. I guess I'm wondering about the appropriateness of Park Board. Yeah, I know they volunteered to do that, but I'm just not sure that's a legitimate Park Board expense?
Park and Recreation. Um, continually getting information from, from, you know, from vendors who want to sell things to the Park and Recreation Department, and footballs and other things like that. So it, uh, you know, they, they expect us to be a larger organization. like that, so it, you know, they, they expect us to be a larger organization, that they have, to want soccer balls and things like that. And so I, I think it is appropriate for the recreation board to do that.
If I could step in for a second, this is Joy. The Park Board has a budget for printing and advertising, and that's the bucket we would be taking this out of.
So I guess I'd make a motion to say that I'm okay with that.
It's Mary Lou, I, can we wait till after we do the salaries for the employees? You know, we've said we don't want to bankrupt a town, so let's.
Okay, let's, let's put it on the agenda for the 26th meeting.
Yeah.
That's okay, okay, Bill?
Yep, well, we're gonna have to adjust because you've already sent it to the paper, but that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can always add an agenda item right at the beginning of meetings, I think.
We can add it, yeah.
Okay. Does that sound okay? You okay with that, Mark? You're not under any time constraint?
No, that's fine, thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments? Any public comments? Bill?
Yeah, just, I, I was rudely ignored, partly because I didn't know how to turn on my, unmute myself, when we were, we were talking about the item three on the agenda. And what I was trying to do, and maybe Chris Willby can answer this question, we did have residents plural, and even though we were talking about an unnamed resident, I was hoping that the motion that was passed, which said we'll go back three years, because we shouldn't go back any further, would apply to anybody that we find, in other words, we were talking about an individual, but I'm hoping that Chris will tell us that, I mean, if we find somebody else who is through no fault of their own was ignored, that we can, we can also go back and ask them for three years worth of, yeah, we, worth of that. We, we didn't identify anybody, so, so if I, if we do it a second time, it can't be a violation, can it?
John, go ahead, Chris.
Well, I was just going to say, if you'd rather, if, if that's the pleasure of the council, perhaps you guys should just revisit that item and, and allow that there's an attempt at communication, no matter what, if, if there was action required from the town, you'd come back to the council anyway, but if you want to give a blanket authority for them to reach forward, but I, I truly don't know if, if some of those need to be, if this is going to be new policy or case-by-case basis, so I, I don't really have any information on that, but you certainly can make it blanket effort to, to reach out. It doesn't seem like that it's a prevalent issue, as far as you know.
John Wall, you had your hand up?
Yeah, my only comment there would be precisely that, I, I think if we're going to set a new policy, which I think the water board has done, Mary Lou can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the water department actually made a stated policy about going back three years based on their experience, which was fairly limited. They had a few situations where people had outstanding balances, and I know, Bill, you've shared that there was one individual that went back significant years, and it was a significant amount of money, and, and the water board made a conscious decision to settle it at three years based on what LaPorte County does with taxes. So I, I think I'm okay with that, but I think if we're going to, I, I believe we're speaking about garbage and, and leaf rather than water right now, and that's town purview as opposed to the water board dealing with their old accounts. So if we're going to make a blanket statement about old accounts, I think maybe give us a little more background so we understand how many of these there are. I, I wouldn't want to encourage somebody to take the risk based on what this policy is. I mean, if there are 15 of these guys and there's $30,000 at stake, that's a different discussion than if there are two of them and there's a few hundred dollars at stake.
John, to speak to John's comment, he is correct, the water department, not that I know of, but if, if they come up, I'd be more than happy to share them. It's, it's just that one, it's a very odd situation how it happened, and the person has been working with Bill, and they'd be more than happy to pay him.
But this was garbage, this isn't, this isn't water.
Yeah.
Right, right, so it's, I think the town council needs to make a policy, if we so choose, that states something on the order of what you're proposing. I have no problem with that three-year clawback, but I, I also don't want to encourage anybody that thinks that if they just wait, we'll, we'll write it off. I, I, I mean, what's the magnitude? Is this the one that you were talking about that was in the neighborhood of 6,000, or?
No, well, it could have been if we went back all that time, but this will probably be close to $1,000.
Okay.
But we went back over three years. But I don't, you know, we're, we are diligently looking at it, you know, we've had that audit, and they put some things in place, and we've got, we do have a person in the water department that's very good at looking at all of these things, so, yeah, but I'll, I'll keep you guys informed.
Then I'd make a motion that, from this point forward, to just put a stamp on what Bill's suggesting, and that is that we reach back three years as a general policy, although I think we also want to be cognizant of the fact that, in fairness to all the other residents, that we don't just, as, as long as we're, we're applying a little more pressure and trying to do some negotiation and, and make sure our records are correct, and I'd, I'd make a motion that we, you know, allow for the three-year clawback as our policy to match the water board.
And is that just refuse and leave?
Well, we, we also have the stormwater fee in, in play right now, so I think, and then what will also be, I guess we, as I sit here and think, we also have the collection on the Lake Shore Drive storm, or rather sanitaries sewer in our future. So I guess, you know, it might be appropriate, once that fee's in there, to, to roll that into this policy, too, if that's our choice.
Maybe, maybe we should think this through before we vote on it. Sounds like we're, we're kind of going on the fly here, and, and maybe there's some issues we haven't thought about.
Well, just, you know, and I know that you, Dr. Lemay, that you come to the water board meetings, anybody that's out there, and we discuss, I mean, we don't discuss their names or anything, but we have put that on our list, and then Lynn is writing letters to them, and it, it seems to be working. They're not, they're not excessive, they're not way, way back, so.
And you may be getting ahead of yourself, actually, as you suggested, this seems like an isolated incident, so, you know, maybe it's one that you guys can take a breath on and, and reassess, and if, if there are more, obviously it would be consistent, and so from Bill's, you know, to Bill's point, consistency in treating everybody the same way, but if this is isolated, maybe you don't need a blanket policy right now, and if it, it shows, then you, you guys can address all of those together, and, you know, getting back to the water, that's a separate career.
Okay. Just, just one comment that, that we, you know, we, I was talking about, we're not talking about storm sewers, we're not talking about, you know, the sewer project or anything else. What, what has happened, not to burden anybody, but, you know, we, because some people are on, you know, on, on a different, are on, on sewers and not on septic, some people got on sewers and they were in what we would call the septic district, we might have missed not just this one, another, so all I was talking about was if we find somebody who is, not through no fault of their own, not escaped past any obligations, but we just failed to bill them, and that, that's all I was talking about. Going forward, we can talk about how we're going to handle people who haven't paid, but this, this was strictly ones, I mean, the person who, who even approached us was understanding that, that she had not paid, but not through any, any of her missteps, she just didn't, she didn't get billed. So, and that, that's all I was talking about, so I don't think we've got any major policy decisions that we're trying to make. I just meant, there was one or two more that don't have to go through the procedure of, of getting an individual, an individual policy decision on what I would consider, consider we're doing, be three or four people.
I think moving forward, we have to either make a policy decision or just make this a one-off.
I'd be in favor, I have to, I'll withdraw what I was saying earlier, and just suggest that we make this a one-off, and rather than make a statement that along the lines of anybody else in the future can go back three years only, I think we need to hold on that till we decide how to handle those, because I think the Lake Shore Drive thing and the stormwater and the rest of it needs to be addressed at some point.
Yeah, I think so, especially the, the sewers, you know, that's going to be a substantial amount of money, we want to be sure that we get that right.
Just so people are informed, because we do have a lot of participants here today, last year, when I was in at the water department early January, there were a couple people that had moved in and never, or moved out and not told us, that's one of our small claims that we're, that Chris is pursuing. But the other thing is, Lynn has put some real control factors in there. If you call in and say, I'm moving, she's, she'll say, well, that's fine, but until the new people call in, you'll still get billed. So that's one of the things, that didn't come up in the audit, but that's one of the things, and when I was in there in January last year, there were two people, one was over here at the Hacienda complex, because we don't know when they change renters, and so when the new one came in, we, I talked to them, and they're like, well, I didn't know, we, I, see, they pay Michigan City Sewer, I said, well, that's not your water. And then the other one was actually in the town, you know, more in the town, and I said, you know, you have to pay, and they all paid up.
Yeah.
And it was, one was like $700, and the other was probably closer to 1,100, but they paid it.
Yeah, so the more I, more I'm hearing, the more it sounds like we have, we have to think about a lot of different parameters before we come up with a policy. Okay. Any other comments? Any council comments?
No, this is Seth McCord, we got the public.
Okay, public comments?
Yeah, and I'm not entirely sure what happened at the building commission yesterday. I don't think anybody who attended the meeting kind of understood precisely what happened, and it's clear that you guys maybe didn't plan it all the way, but it does seem like that there's something being passed, and it appears like it's being passed under cloak of darkness with accelerated special meetings and special town council meetings. I just want to remind the town household their obligation to, you know, be open and transparent.
We, we have been as open and transparent as we can be, Seth, that, that all these meetings have been published. We moved up some, some meetings just to, basically so that the town council could deal with it at this meeting, but that, that obviously didn't happen. But no, there's no effort to hide anything, and, and every meeting that we have will be public. We had one meeting that was an executive meeting because it related to legal issues, and we can't discuss legal matters at a public meeting.
Dr. Lemay, this is Chris, I, I just want to remind, because I know these are sensitive issues, that, you know, the public comment portion is really, you know, all due respect to Seth or whoever else speaks, they get to make their points, but it isn't question and answer unless you open it, so I just want to remind.
Okay. Any council comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
It's a movie.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, bye, everybody.
Thank you.